...Bolton Board on December 29, 2015. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council will comment from any member of the public. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy, and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so maybe you're properly reflected in a minute's. Anybody from the public wants to be heard on a matter? Miss, come up, please, and state your name for the record, yes.
Doesn't matter.
That's the, yeah, we still have to record it though, it's a public meeting.
When you call 766-3000. Oh, wait. When you call 766... Oh, Sheila. When you call the Borough Hall. 766-3000. Nobody knows who's got what extension, and most of us don't know the names of the people that work there. So it's very hard to get through to the proper person. We no longer have anyone that's ringing the phone.
Okay. All right, we'll look at revising it.
That isn't true. If you hit zero, the call is into the clerk's office.
It says if you hit zero, you dial my name. That's the message on the recording. You double check it.
That's the chain?
That's correct, yeah.
No, I hope so.
Correct, yes.
So maybe we should have a directory that, you know, for county clerk, press one or some kind of thing.
We have that.
Yeah, it has it.
Well, yeah, but you can't get to it. We do?
Well, it's been changed a couple of times, so I guess I'll have to look at it.
We'll roll over to the mayor's cellphone, maybe.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to be heard from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have another issue.
Come on up. So we can hear you in our PA system. We're recording.
Okay, I just want to know the plan for the roads in Burnsville. Is there a plan?
Yes.
And does the public know about it?
Yes. It's posted on our website.
And then we had several meetings.
Yeah, it's a payment rate study, and it ranks the roads from the most severe. And Jeff, you could chime in.
Yeah, so we had an evaluation done several years ago, and there's documentation on the website. We've done more than six points miles in the road
Six point 102.
in the last several years. And we have three more, four more large roads for next year as part of the plan. And then we have to make a decision to follow after that.
One of the reasons people move here is they love the small, narrow, windy roads. If you take away that, you ruin the, you ruined it. That's why it has so much appeal.
Right, we keep that in mind.
And why is there a double yellow line? Double yellow lines are for highways. Do not pass. Double yellow lines on all these small little, right, nine poles goes into a dead end part of the road. Double yellow line. Doesn't even make sense.
Okay, we'll discuss it.
These nice little small roads, country roads, widening them. That's why I'm afraid you're going to, your plan is...
What road are you talking about?
Clark.
We have no plans to widen Clark.
Okay, and any other streets around there that you're going to widen?
We have no plans. We just had mill and pave work done on it.
Post Kuhnhardt?
Peachcroft.
Oh, we know that.
We have mill and paved. We didn't want in the road. We just left it as is when we paved it.
Peach, uh, excuse me, Post Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
It looks like in one section, it's about 30 to 40 feet.
Yes, so what happened on Post...
That's at least five feet.
That's because of drainage.
More needed drainage. And the reason why we needed drainage is because we want to work roads to last longer. Because if you don't have appropriate drainage, the water gets underneath the road.
But the street is ruined.
Not only that, you had ice issues up there also.
No, it's done already. It's at the existing length.
It's not done.
No, meaning the drainage is...
They didn't pave it. They made it safe.
They had to dig it up to put the ice under the ground.
Couldn't they pick...
The road isn't going to be, the road isn't going to be wider.
It looks five feet wider, at least.
No, that's got to be all grassed over.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant post road.
No, post Kuhnhardt, yeah.
There's drainage currently being put in there. We had a stop, but now we're starting up again. We should get a recorder if we just aren't here. We'll finish that road. We'll probably mill and pave it in the spring just because we're running out of time with the weather. We have, we didn't want in that road at any point.
Thank goodness.
But drainage has been put in. And that's the reason why we need drainage to keep the water from going underneath the road and buckling and destroying it because we want to make them last as long as we can. Because it's expensive.
Of course, of course.
And if it's wider, it's expensive too.
Oh, we don't need it. And how about, we want the people to go slow. And also, the single line. If you go back to that single yellow line.
Chief, you want to comment on that? Lining the roads?
There has to, a lot of these roads that run through townville, significant amount of traffic. And for a very, very long time, there's been ordinances in place that prohibit passing on certain streets in order to enforce that law. There has to be striding on the streets without the striding. You're implying that passing is permissible when the roads are narrow. They're windy, there's a lot of deer. The sides of the roads are washed out and eroded because of the drainage issues that you're trying to improve. It's not safe for vehicles to travel at accelerated speeds and to try to prevent passes on many of these roads. So the, the yellow lines are there for safety reasons.
I think this Stephen was saying, can't we just have a single yellow line?
A single yellow line is not a recognized line under the state statute for no passing. It's a double yellow line.
But when the road is very narrow, you would have people passing. Just common...
Well, you would hope not.
Common sense.
It's uncommon sometimes.
You'd be surprised.
And those lines have been there for years and years and years and years and years. This is not something new that we're doing now.
It's not that long.
I've been here for 35 years and there's been double yellow lines.
I'm here much, much more than that, much longer.
And you are. 35 years that I've been here, there's been double yellow lines.
All right. Anybody else from the public wants to be heard?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your input. Seeing no one else, I'll close the open session and move to presentations. We have Verizon Wireless here regarding, right of way. Come on up, folks.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hi.
My name's Steve Weiss. I'm the manager for the Outdoor Gas Program in northern New Jersey. There are a few other people here with me tonight. Maureen, you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Maureen Hopkins. I work for Tilson Technology Management. We're an implementation and development partner with Verizon Wireless.
We also have Glenn Pearson.
Glenn Pearson. I'm a consultant part of PureCon Solutions and the radio frequency design for some of these networks that Verizon's working.
And also Susan Paluso. Can you see her? She's our Director of Network Engineering. Also, she's joining us tonight as well. So first, I want to thank you all for allowing us to get on the agenda for this evening, so quickly, actually. And I, there's a number of handouts. So you have, there was a package that was delivered about a month ago. I know that Sandra had mentioned to me that it was delivered via email. And on top of that, there's another handout tonight. It's a PowerPoint presentation. And there's also the franchise agreement. So those are the three materials that were, that should be in your possession. It's a lot of material. And I don't have, I don't know how much time I have. I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. And I thought what might be a good place to start is we're here, we're here essentially for two reasons. We're here to get two levels of municipal consents. And we'll talk more about what those consents are and what they are specifically as we get through the conversation. So I think it would be a good idea to maybe start out with a primer that talks about the technology and the infrastructure. I think that's important to start so we'll off at the same place. So I've been, I've used an analogy in other venues like this, and it's worked. So I'm going to go for it again. Okay, the same thing. I want you all to imagine that you've got a glass vase sitting here, and it's empty. Okay, now, that empty, just keep in mind that empty right now is pretty much Burnsville. There's nothing in it. Now, under more traditional circumstances, we have three different types of infrastructure that are being deployed. We have macros, what we call macros. We have our small cells, and then we have our outdoor gas nodes. Okay? So I want you to imagine now that we're putting in large, clear, glass marbles. And those are your macros. And your macros are very typically what you'll see on the highway. The monopoles with usually three, there's usually three or four carriers on them. They're pointing out in three different directions. And there's usually three to four antennas pointing in each different direction. Okay? So that is your typical macro. I'm sure you've all seen those. So those are your big glass marbles. All right, you're putting those in the vase. All right? That gives you some level of coverage, wireless coverage. All right? Now, you still have spaces in there. Those spaces now, you're going to put what we call our small cells. Now, our small cells are usually deployed on buildings that are anywhere between 40 and maybe 75 feet. And they're usually much smaller footprint as far as the equipment requirement goes. And it's usually one antenna. Could be as many as two antennas, but they're much smaller. Okay, so now you're filling up the vase with the small cells. And now you're filling up more of those gaps. So now you're covering some of the areas that maybe you weren't covering with the macro. All right? Now imagine you're sticking some, you're putting water in this, in this vase, and it starts to run over. Okay? That running over is your capacity. So now you're getting calls that are just not taking place. They're being dropped. There's all kinds of issues around the wireless communications. If you throw in sand to start absorbing some of that water, those are your outdoor gas nodes. Okay? Now, let's go back to the beginning. Burnsville right now and the areas that we're looking to deploy do not, it doesn't have any, there's no coverage. There's no macros, and there's no small cells. So you've got a big void of coverage. All right, we're not even talking about capacity. Capacity is when you might have a macro of small cells, and you've got so many people using their devices that is just not enough bandwidth for that use, for the amount of use that's going on. That's where you have capacity issues. In Burnsville right now, we have, we have a coverage problem. So I think that's a good place to start. So that's where you have coverage, and that kind of defines coverage versus capacity. So the issue here in Burnsville is a coverage one. Okay? So what we're looking for is we're looking to deploy our, I think you probably all, I don't know who was around at the time that we had our Burnsville macro that was, that we were trying to get approved. And at the time, I think it went through litigation, and essentially, the site never went up. So Glenn is going to show you where that original macro site was proposed, which would have provided some of the coverage that we're talking about tonight. All right? So now we've got this area that doesn't have any coverage. And we're looking to deploy our, what we call our outdoor gas nodes. Right? Those are generally deployed, we try to deploy them first as a hierarchy. We use existing structures, existing poles. In this case, JCPN L is the franchise, is the electric company, correct?
And so are Verizon poles.
Right, there's going to be VZT, there's going to be Verizon landline poles. But the electric company, the franchise is JCPN L. So what we first look for is on the roads in which, you know, we're having the primary problem is we're looking for existing structures that we can use to put the equipment on. That would be, that would be the first, the top, the top choice. In many cases, we can't use a lot of these poles. Not by our choice. It's by the criteria set by JCPN L in this case. If you've got primary power, you can't use the pole. If it's, this would not be in the case of JCPN L. But PSCG, for example, has solar, has the solar panels. I'm sure you've seen them. That disqualifies a pole. So there's a number of things that disqualify a pole from being used. So in many cases, we have to set a new pole in the right of way. So the first level of consent that we're looking for is for, would allow Verizon Wireless to install its equipment on those poles that are legally erected in the public right of way. Okay, they could be existing poles. If we find an existing pole that we can use, we're going to use it. Obviously, that's our first choice. If we can't, we're going to use the right of ways, and we would put a new pole set by Verizon in the public right of way.
Verizon telephone.
Verizon telephone. Sorry, not Verizon what? Verizon telephone would be setting the pole. Would be, would be actually setting the new pole. The third, that would cover our first, our first consent that we're asking for. So we're looking to the, to the town council to approve our right, Verizon Wireless, to install our equipment on those structures in the currently existing or would be placed, illegally placed in the public right of way. Now, there are certain areas that, and I remember speaking to the mayor and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. And we're not sure if this particular level of consent will apply here. But the second level consent is a consent in which there might be a street that doesn't have overhead utilities. So if you have a typical residential street that doesn't have overhead utilities, everything's underground, I'm sure most people would agree that it would be offensive to most of the residents on that street to now stick a pole in the right of way on that street. So in that case, what we would be looking to do is get permission to put what we call a stealth design. It could be, there's a number of stealth designs that we use. They could be lit structures. They could be unlit structures. It would be a design that would be, we would come in and we would talk to the town about, or the borough about, and we would get your permission to use that structure. That particular type of arrangement would require the second level consent. And that involves a CLEC, which in this case, Tilson, who's our implementation partner, they are licensed CLEC. Their licensed CLEC entity is called SQF. They would be deploying that particular structure in the right of way. Now, they do not have your typical utility, JCPN L, VZT. They have the right to operate in the right of way through the franchise agreement, which I passed out tonight, but you're going to have a hard time reading that. But it's there, and it's likely in your ordinances. I'm sure your township attorney will, can point to it someplace in the township, in the actual ordinances of the municipality. So the public utility already had the franchise agreements and the, it's laid out as to their operating, their ability to operate in the right of way. What a CLEC has to come in and get, that's the second level consent. The CLEC would have to come in and ask for the right to operate in that right of way. They don't, by virtue, by virtue of the franchise agreement, they're not included. Their rights are not included in that franchise agreement. So they have to come in, and they have to separately get a consent from you to operate in the right of way just as JCPN L and VZT have the right to do now by virtue of that franchise agreement. So those are basically the two level consents that we're looking for. So I don't know. We haven't yet, I think Glenn had mentioned that there might be some streets. And I don't know, mayor, I think we did talk about this briefly. I'm not sure if we determine if the second level would be required because I think most of the streets we're looking at here, which we're going to go into now, do have overhead utilities. So assuming that overhead utilities and the current infrastructure exists, then we're really likely going to deploy similar structures to maintain the streetscape. So the whole idea here is to try to maintain streetscape. If there's holes and if there's existing overhead utilities, then the existing streetscape would allow for other structures of the same type and of the same size not to exceed 10% over what is comparable along that street in height to be deployed. In, on streets in which there were, like I said, no overhead utilities, and it's not consistent with the streetscape, to put a wood pole, then we're looking at that other option, that second option.
How high are these things? Show us examples.
Yeah, they're going to make, yeah, they should be in your, they should be in your package.
So I guess I have a question. When you were putting together the presentation, and I guess you did a little bit of a look around to see where the coverage gaps were and where there was no coverage. Did Verizon Wireless do any kind of study to see how many JCPN L poles would fit the criteria to be able to piggyback on theirs?
Right, so this is generally the procedure that we do. We do, we do the design. So we determine where we need to design what we call a polygon. So a polygon, just again, for nomenclature sake, a polygon is nothing more than organized design of nodes. So radio frequency, our radio frequency team, Glenn, he, together with our internal team, they design where they believe, where we need the specific nodes, and those are search areas. So those, that cluster design is called a polygon. So to your point, what happens is we get, we know where there's problems, coverage in this case. And the initial search areas are delineated. And then we do an initial preliminary design visits along those streets. And we kind of scope out what we think we can use or what we can't use. And then we formalize, we go back, we fine tune the design. And then we send out what we call our site acquisition people to find the specific locations that we're going to use. So I'm going to like Glenn talk to.
Let me just ask you a second thing, I'm sorry. So, and I didn't apologize if it's in here because I didn't read through it all yet. So do you have a number of poles that you can already use from JCPenel versus how many Verizon Wireless? Specific poles would have to be erected?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
We have thirty-two, I believe it's thirty-two search areas in Burnsville about right now. We have thirty-two proposed locations. At this point, they're called search areas. And it might also help you to know, I mean, it kind of is logical when you think about it. When we talked about the macros versus the small cells. Macros have what we call a very large circumference for a search area. Because you're looking to just cover a very broad area, okay? Small cells are going to fill up those gaps. So they're going to have a smaller search area, smaller bunch of candidates that we can choose from. So when you get down to the node level, you're being very, very specific about the candidates that you can choose within that circumference. Because you're now trying to really, in this case, it's a coverage issue. So you still have some specificity as far as the actual search area. But right now, we've determined that there's thirty-two search areas that would be required to accomplish the RF objective that we're looking to accomplish for in Burnsville.
Now, the package that was included in our handouts, well, what Sandy sent us, the stuff that you sent to Sandy earlier on.
Correct.
I've actually asked Sandy to send it to our police chief in Valentine and probably also a fire chief so that they can look at the dots that you put, which is basically on the Mendham Borough. And they may have better insight as to other areas where we have problems communicating.
And we would definitely want to hear.
So I think that that's Kevin Valentine, I think you guys need to have an over change sync up. Because he's got his, you know, perspective on that as well, as does our fire chief.
Okay.
Because it looked to me, it was almost all Mendham Borough. And I know it's a terrible area, they have no cell phone service.
Okay. So is the fire?
The fire chief is not here, our police chief is here.
Okay. So maybe when Glenn shows, gets to the next part of the presentation, maybe there, maybe there's some feedback. You might want to weigh in on that. Okay? All right, do you want to go through?
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, just a couple of your questions, kind of.
Are we planning on doing the entire borough or just parts of it? What's the plan here?
Well, the plan is what we're going to show you tonight for right now. And what we have to do with this.
I'll hold those one ears and please, these are more probably.
Yeah, then this is not to say that there's not going to be at some point in the future, an additional requirement for more nodes. But right now, we've determined that this area of Burnsville that we're looking to address has got, it's the area of concentration right now.
I have a couple of questions. Of course, the new poles, of course, you don't know how many right yet, understood. But you can hear, you know, even some of the people today, the way Burnsville is right now, minimize, you know. You're a company, you want to minimize the amount of money you're going to spend and everything else. We want to minimize the amount of poles we're putting everywhere, considering, you know, the town and everything else. All right? One thing, can they be shared? These new poles that you put in, you're filling in spots, can they be shared? Like in an emergency situation, you know, a power line goes down, they can just, you know, swing it over to your pole if they're not doing it right now.
Well, look, I mean, there's pros and cons to this technology and the infrastructure. I mean, on our macros and our small cells, they're backup with generator backup. They don't have the incidences that you would normally expect to see if you're going to deploy on poles. So there is vulnerability with these nodes, there's no question about it.
I guess I didn't explain myself, like if this is an existing pole, that's an existing pole. And you have to put a pole in the middle, somewhere in the middle. And say this pole comes down, can this pole be utilized to swing a line over, span on the other side? That's kind of.
As soon as Verizon Telephone puts a pole, that pole is then usable by JCPenel.
Okay.
Or by the cable company.
What about AT&amp;T?
Or Sprint?
Yeah.
Okay, just wondering whether we're going to get similar poses.
There is a book, it's about an inch and a half thick, the National Electrical Safety Code. And once they meet the requirements of National Electric Safety Code and whatever rules of the owner of the pole, like JCPenel has certain rules, PCG has certain rules, then they can use it, you just have to meet the criteria, that's all.
Yeah, but it's a good question, because what happens is a lot of times, as soon as you put a pole in between, a span pole, you have to attach. So if you're not allowed to use either pole on either end because of primary power, the minute you put a new, we would not set the VZT pole on that same side of the street because we have to attach, which means, you know, just by deductive reasoning, you have to attach it. So now that pole, the new pole set becomes primary power.
You can't use it.
And you can't use it.
I understand.
So it's a very odd kind of situation, which is why we would be going across the street. Now, JCPenel does have another interesting criteria. PSCNG poles, you're allowed to attach equipment directly to a PSCNG pole. Okay, with JCPenel, they don't allow you to do that. You have to, you have to put your equipment in the right of way, minimum of eight feet away, I think, I believe it's eight feet away, the criteria. So you have to have ground furniture, the equipment actually is mounted, is on the ground. So that's an additional challenge in some cases versus being able to attach it. Now with VZT, if you set a new VZT pole set, you can attach the equipment right to that pole. But the antenna, of course, and the equipment as well, the box, the shroud, what we call the shroud, which is where the equipment is housed inside a cabinet, the cabinet's called.
And that's the little black box that's on this pole?
Or green box, or silver box, or whatever.
So far, they've been brown, kind of matches the color of the wood pole.
So in this case, I mean, we're going to have kind of, assuming, you know, we are talking about JCPenel, you're really looking at really two options here. You're looking at using an existing JCPenel pole and having the equipment on the ground in the right of way, eight feet away, or a new pole set, most likely across the street for the reasons we just talked about.
With everything on the pole.
With everything on the pole, everything mounted to that pole. So again, our first preference is to use existing infrastructure. And to your point, these are co-locatable, they have to have structural run, just like, just like any other structure. You have to make sure structurally it can, it has the integrity to hold the radio equipment. Generally, the limitation with co-location in these cases is going to be just the same as it is for a macro, which is antenna separation. Because if you don't have the proper antenna separation, you get interference. Now, there are a lot of, and I guess you can also speak, Glenn can speak to this. There's single antennas that can be used in some cases for two, for two different, you know, for like an AT&amp;T and Verizon. Some people choose to use two different antennas, in which case they would be separated off the pole. It would come, if whoever was on the top would come a little bit lower on that pole. And it would have to be separated, you know, we've heard anywhere between three and four feet at this point. But we're not sure what that is exactly.
Contractor handles the arrangements with those other providers?
Well, every other, any other provider has to get pole attachment agreements. We have Verizon Wireless, we already secured all the pole attachment agreements with PSCNG, JCPenel, VZT. Any other entity would have to do exactly the same. So it's, you know, everybody has to go through the same process. But they are co-locatable, subject to some of the, some of the criteria we just talked about.
And some of this will be answered probably during your presentation, right?
The radio frequency.
Yeah, with the frequencies, okay.
Right, so you're going to see specifically tonight, the areas that we're kind of targeting. And the thirty-two search areas that currently, right now, are mapped out for us to pursue and go find specific locations for that. All right?
Okay, now, my last question, light fixtures in some of these areas that have underground, they have light poles in there? And you would be mounting on those light poles, I would guess? Or like in the middle of town, we have light poles? I mean, where would the liability be if something got damaged or hit by a car or something happened to that light pole? Who's fixing it, that type of thing?
So Verizon Wireless can't attach to JCPenel light poles. They don't allow any attachments to their metal streetlight structures. So in that case, that would be a situation that Supa's referencing with the second level of consent, where Verizon Wireless would actually request to replace that light fixture with a new upgraded light fixture that can house the equipment inside the base, with just a small antenna up over the light. That would be owned by SQF, which is the CLEC entity owned by Tilson. Because Verizon Wireless doesn't own infrastructure in the right of way, JCPenel and Verizon Telephone won't own light fixtures with wireless nodes in them. So that's one we would talk to for that second level of consent. So the light fixture itself would have to come out, we would put in a new one and it would be designed, we would work with the town on the design, but we always make it look as close as possible to what's already there.
Then you would maintain that fixture and the light itself because it was taken out and you put yours in, I guess, okay.
So we would have all the liability for the light fixture. If a car ran into it, we'd have the liability to replace the light and make sure that that was in good record numbers.
All right, anyone else?
Unless you know how far you want to go through the PowerPoint document, but where I start off is, there is a.
I think there's a diagram you're talking about, the drive diagram.
Yes, so this is on the third page.
Yep.
There is a map with a bunch of dots. And this is a sample drive that was done on the seven hundred megahertz, which is one of the frequency bands out of four that Verizon has FCC license for, for the LTE data. Everything's running on the LTE 4G data pretty much at this point. If you make a phone call, it can, most of the time, it's going to go on the typical cellular frequencies that you've always been on. But everything is migrating to over data, just like if you have a cable, if you have a cable to your house, cable TV, and you get a phone from them, it's voice over IP, voice over data system. It's not a separate circuit anymore. So you can do the same thing with cell phones. And so cell calls can go in the data network, and that's been happening over the last couple of years. And 911 calls go over that network, that's been tested through the state of New Jersey as well for Verizon. If that, if someone makes a phone call on one of the latest phones, it will go over to the LTE data network and will connect properly to 911. So this map just has some colors, the green colors are good coverage, which are, it's established, in case a lot of reliable suburban signal is, you get a signal into a wood frame structure type of thing. There are sites all the way on the right side, which is over by 287. The one that's showing up, the two green areas, they're showing up. One is Maple Avenue, just north, the Monopole up there. And then on 202, there's a Verizon building, Verizon central office building. And there's antennas on top of that, which we've testified to several times in front of the zoning board. Then there's a site that's also on the left side. There's, there's really nothing in between, as you know. And then there's also, if you go the north side, there's a dotted line that goes across the top of the plot. That's the county slash town boundary. So we know that there's a couple of sites into Mendham, so the township, even Borough, which shows a little bit of coverage up there.
So that's what that green is on the border up there, that's coming from the Mendham side?
It's coming from the Mendham side. The clock tower that's up there, that's at the school.
Sisters.
Yes.
My own crowd.
Oh, wow.
So, and it's the hilltops, I mean, one of them said that, yeah, you live on the hilltops, so sometimes the hilltops are okay. But as soon as you dip into the valleys, there is an A signal. So you know the terrain around here, you know the trees, the hills, the roads, as I said before, they're winding back and forth. So it's a very, very difficult area to cover. There were a couple of pictures on the next page that were put, it's scenes that you're familiar with. Sometimes the sunlight doesn't hit the roads in Burnsville because the tree canopy is so thick. So we're not telling you anything new with that. The, the next one is just a few plots of the elevation changes. The southern end is always on the left, and it's showing Hardscrabble from the southern end of town, up peaks out at about six hundred and sixty feet above sea level, and then dips down a little bit, goes into Mendham. And you have Mendham Road, it starts down low, down by Clermont, at about four hundred feet above sea level, and then rises about seven hundred feet with a couple of dips in the middle, on between Mendham. There's also one for Clermont, which is similar, you start out down towards the downtown area, Clermont starts out, and it just goes uphill from four hundred feet all the way to seven hundred feet with a couple of dips in the middle. So it's, it's not a nice smooth, continuous area to cover, it's quite variable. The next plot you have is a, is basically a computer-generated map, which fills in the places you can't drive, from the, you had the dots, which were on the roads. This is computer-generated aerial map, this is above we present, most often in the zoning board cases, et cetera, demonstrating where we have coverage. This is very, very similar, which I actually have a copy with me, of what was presented as the gap in service when the Washington Corner Road site went to the zoning board. And it's a little different because this is a plot of the 4G LTE data. And six years ago, we were showing voice coverage on the voice system. So there are some, there are some differences, but it's alike.
The seven hundred is the strict media data?
There are, the first channel that Verizon put out would be a, for data, would be a seven hundred megahertz channel. They have two other frequency bands that are much higher in frequency, which is nineteen hundred and twenty-one hundred. However, the higher frequencies do not like the hills and the trees. So in an area such as Burnsville, you're really going to depend, when you're into more rural areas, you're going to depend on the lower frequencies to try to get the coverage. If you're going to try to design it for the higher frequencies, you're going to need a lot of installations because. Yes, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't go as far on the higher frequencies. So everything we're talking about here is trying to get it working on the lower frequencies, getting yourself a base of what's going on. And then when you get towards the higher populated areas, downtown Burnsville, et cetera, we've put a small cell on Essex, the building on Essex, to handle more capacity. And that's going to have the twenty-one hundred, Leonard's frequency in it, to handle a lot more density of people. The, the site that's up the road, up 202, on the Verizon building, that has all the different frequency bands in it. And you can handle, there's a lot of things going on there, you've got ShopRide down the road, you've got People Finley and up and down 202. So you're going to have all the common frequency bands there. The, the DAS nodes will be capable of handling the higher frequency bands. But we're spacing them to meet the needs at the seven hundred megahertz, so we're not putting too many out there. We're trying, as you said, we're not looking to put something every five hundred feet. But even at the seven hundred megahertz, you're, any antenna is not going to clear the tree line. So you're just brute force into the trees. And we try not to put them on the front of a grand front lawn that's, you know, five hundred feet deep and, you know, et cetera. Try to put it when there's, when there is somewhat of a tree or some, like some kind of coverage, not really out in the open.
What's the, I mean, there's many, many variables, what's the basic difference that these things have?
Could go as little as five hundred feet and as high as fifteen hundred, depending on what's there. If you're brute force through the trees, you're getting about five hundred feet. And if you've got, if you're standing on the road and you can see fifteen hundred feet up the road, you'll cover the entire road until you make a turn. And then they'll just drop off because then you're going to be on the trees again. So it's sort of corridor coverage. We try to place them in areas, we can get back into some of the side streets and some of the homes as best we can from the major, for the thoroughfares. We, I think we talked all about the connection of node locations, we went through utility codes, et cetera, and some examples. But just wanted to go through maybe some things that are specifics of what we're looking at. And in the last second over here, you have to let me know if it's too far, you want me to move it, et cetera. But I'll start out with something simple. This is a general street map of the portion of Fordham, Burnsville. This is the north, eastern portion of Burnsville. The tan tint is the actual Burnsville. The white areas are other towns, Harding, Mendham, Borough, Mendham Township, et cetera. The initial effort here is, you know, just starting out, we're trying to get three major roads. Trying to get the Hardscrabble, Mendham, and Dryden to Clermont.
So Glenn, just point to where the macro was.
Can you see back there, or do you want to move up closer?
I want them to use it as a reference point as far as where the macro was that we never were able to build.
We're mostly in a, as I said, the county town boundary or end, between Tan and the, here. Hardscrabble runs down the eastern side and it goes into Burns. We've got Mendham Road that comes straight down the middle, winds down. And then we have Clermont that jets off, and then you hang a left, then you go up Dryden, and then back into Mendham. I believe you, Mendham Borough at that point. So these are interfaces in Borough. We have other ones that go further up into Borough. We have ones that go Hardscrabble, conceal it up into the Borough, and get it towards existing coverage as well. I have a map, if someone wants to see that part, I figured you're more concerned about Burnsville at this time, but we can go over that if you'd like. So this is the general idea. I've actually numbered these, Burnsville, one, two, three, four, five, six, up to nine, to get out of the Hardscrabble. And then we start off at ten on Mendham Road, and we come down into about nineteen. And then we have twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two of Clermont. Then I just put one a little bit further than Dryden because there's a little hill there. It's like, hey, if I go up to the top of the hill, I can get both sides. So I slid a little further up, and then we hang up on Dryden, and we come all the way up around to the thirty-two. And then the next one is just into the Mendham Borough, that's labeled Mendham Borough fourteen. But this is the initial file. So with this, you're going to be looking at having a corridor of coverage through this area. And depending on if there's trees, if there's no trees on the sides of the roads, how far it's going to go back off the road. But they're spaced so that they will be able to connect, they'll be able to see. And we went through all the terrain and all the street view photos and drove the area. And we have a pretty good idea that these will all connect. So one's going to be shorter because maybe there's a hill or there's a turn. So these two are going to have to be closer, and there's a lot of tree cover. And then it's an open straight area, and we can spread those apart a little bit. So we've actually identified each one of these is on a pole, is located on a pole with the exact coordinates GPS coordinates for it. And then the question of can we use that pole? We know if there's primary on it, primary power, which is the higher voltage, then you come down, you have secondary, which is your household covering, your two hundred and twenty volts. And then you have your cable and telephone. So a lot, almost all the poles have the primary power one, the triple line that's up on top. And once we go through and we take another walk through this, and have a couple of other people with us, and we'll take a look at the poles, and if it has a, we've picked ones that don't have any other boxes on them, they don't have any electrical features that come down from the top and conduits that go into the ground. So these are as clean as we can get, as we can find. And then we look at those, say, well, can we use this one? And then put the street furniture next to it, which will look like traffic boxes. Like you've, you've got a box that's two by three on a traffic light. I mean, those would be stainless steel usually, if you see them on a street corner. That's similar to what you're looking at, except, what color would you like it? Probably brown or green in this kind of situation.
What would be the distance between those service boxes? Like one of those service boxes would be able to take, what, fifteen hundred feet, two thousand feet, or just that one?
That, that service box would only handle that one antenna. Because that's the radio portion, we're going, that service box, we're going to have fiber, strong, long poles to get to each one of these boxes. And then we convert the signal from the glass, from light on the fiber to a radio signal. And then we have to get to the little radio transmitter and then go up and feed the antenna. So there's only going to be a short antenna run. It's not feasible to take the antenna line and run it down to multiple poles. So we just have to string the fiber between the poles, and then we need the equipment to convert it.
And the power source is from where?
The power source will be the commercial power on at the pole.
So if it's across the street, so Jersey Central Power is going down the left side of the street, and Verizon puts their poles, then you'll be stretching wires across the street.
So then, well, I mean, they stretch now because they go to houses, right? So it's going to be a drop, just like having a house. It's going to be a hundred and twenty volts, nothing crazy, maybe two twenty if that's what they decide to give us. But it's going to be household power. And it's not going to be a lot of interference from me. Something used to get household back in the fifties, so sixty, half thirty, you know, something like that. It's not going to be a lot. So from the existing pole, we'd have a line that comes over, it brings power. We'd have a line that comes over and brings the fiber. And they would come down the pole, go into the box, and then out of the box would come a cable that would go back up the pole and go to an antenna that's about the size of a Spacal bucket, maybe a little bigger.
And did I hear before you said these aren't, there's no backup power from these things?
Correct. In most cases, the power companies don't want batteries on the pole.
I don't, but if they're your things, then?
I don't, normally, they're not going to have batteries.
It's anticipated that when the power cells strike, they may be such a.
That was, you know, that's one of the things.
The technology comes, comes our way, and it makes sense, yeah, we would like to, you know, we would like to look at deploying it for the same reasons we have them on the other.
So just from the OEM purposes and police and fire, that there's a big sparring of these cells, is that what they want?
Yes, that was one of the things we talked about in the hearings for the border side. The one thing I did mention, off of Washington Corner Road, the red dot on the map, that is where the, where we tried to put a macro site, which would have had, you know, backup power and diverse routing for the telephone connections and some more hardened solution. But that's, that didn't go over very well, so we're here for ultimate solutions.
So it's not to say that's not down the road at some point in time, as far as we're seeing that, but we just don't know yet, as far as backing up the nodes.
So that's the general idea, I mean, we can see it from an aerial view too, if you want. This is a printout from Google, all the same docks, the same roads we talked about are on the near. The darker areas are obviously tree, you can see more open areas, the high school, I think that's the high school, over in this area. And you know, we see some of the areas on Mendham Road does get more open, so we might have a couple, a lot more separation. These are closer, there's a set of trees in between, and there's a hill through there. So the area on Hardscrabble, where it's a lot of trees, they're a lot closer together. And then we have an area that has a restraint shock that we can spread out a little bit. It's definitely barriers. Some places, we didn't find any infrastructure at all. Okay, I know that we're looking over at Tempe Wood Road, there's a section that goes to Jockey Hollow, that there are no, it's a, a good stretch, so that's always a question.
Are these some of the areas where the police department could start about?
Yes.
No, not from what I've seen. I think if we can improve the cellular service in town, I think that will be of great benefit to your customers as well as to our ability to be able to push information out to people in the community using social media, which seems to be the goal to now for information. Question that none of this will create any interference with our AM radio station frequency, I think it's above that.
This is the same signal that's coming out of the site that's on the Verizon central office building on 202. It's the same one that's coming out of the Essex building. It's on the same one that's coming off the quarry, the pole is up on that quarry.
Are you putting some of these transmitters in closer proximity to our transmitter, to the AM radio station? And I know there's a big difference in frequencies there. I just want to make sure that you didn't locate it in an area that would interfere with that as well. As we're starting to look at some of our internal communications, our radio infrastructure, you know, we're doing some seven hundred megahertz upgrades right now. And I know you're on a different frequency in your license, so I'm asking, I don't think, is there any possibility of any interference with other seven hundred frequencies?
When we are putting up seven hundred, and the county system, the state system is seven hundred as well, they are separate. When we are putting up seven hundred, uh, and the, uh, the county system and the state system is seven hundred as well, they are separated, physically separated. Uh, and the, the transmits are both relatively next to each other. And then the receivers are, are they separated the way the SEC, a lot of the frequencies are separated by several, uh, megahertz in between. So they don't have any particular, uh, uh, problems. I know firsthand that, uh, I worked on the Rockland County seven hundred megahertz radio system, the dispatch system. And they totally created on a tower with Verizon. The antennas were ten feet apart on the same tower. Uh, they didn't experience any issues with that. But if there's, if there's anything that does occur, our SEC license, uh, takes precedence over that. And if there's an issue, we have to stop transmitting until we resolve your issue.
The area that you're focusing on here is an area that we don't really have the equipment in right now. So I don't, I don't foresee any problems with any of our equipment. But you're very familiar with, with communications issues in town, with the poverty of the town. You talked about the, you know, the low valleys and the peaks and the mountain tops. It's, it's been a challenge for us for years and years. And that's one of the reasons that your primary emergency communications network that we utilize is still on Loeban, down at thirty-nine.
So Loeban, Loeban works the best in hills.
It does. And, and that's, uh, that's one of the bar fears is that, you know, moving towards somebody's more techni- technology-based communication infrastructures, reliability of the communications actually lessens. You know, the technology is better. It doesn't work in the mountainous areas as well as in Loeban does for us. So for right now, we, we're operating a dual system. So we really have two separate communication systems. One, uh, to Loeban that we use primarily, and one that we use to communicate with the county and some of the other towns around us, which is the higher end. We're moving to the seven hundred now. To go do that. So I don't, I don't really see any problem. I see, I think it's an advantage to the people in the community to be able to have more reliable cellular services. As long as it doesn't interfere with any other communications technology that's out there right now. And as far as the poles, all we have in town that I'm aware are poles that are owned by, um, Verizon, uh, Telephone and Ulebel Telephone and the, uh, JCPN. We don't have anything, I believe, that's owned by the SEC. However, there might be some privately owned towers in the area. There might be some other privately owned or installed poles that maybe have been installed by other entities. So you're only talking about using power company poles and, or public utility poles right now. Verizon and JCPN, you're not looking at any other poles?
Correct. These are all targeted on existing with poles by either those two facilities.
So the question becomes whether they become usable and that's the next, that's the next step.
What, what is the, um, the, the coverage circumference from each node? You know, how far off the street? I know it depends with cover, uh, trees and so forth, but typically speaking, what kind of radius?
Five hundred to fifteen hundred.
Off, off the road?
Yes.
So that could be in someone's front yard?
No, no, we're talking, I'm talking about the coverage.
It's certainly.
The wireless coverage from each location.
It's how far can you take your phone away from one of these before it doesn't work?
I've never had a problem with any cell service, ever. No, we don't, ever.
Well, the, the mountain has a significant coverage problem, which is what we're talking about.
This side.
You're on that Mendon side almost, so you get, you're probably working off their tower.
What percentage of the town do you think will have cell phone service after all this is?
I don't have any percentage numbers. I know that, uh, from a computer standpoint, there was a, um.
Didn't look like Mount Harmony had a good.
The seven hundred picture had a lot of gray in it, or beige or whatever.
Then there's another seven hundred right after that.
Right.
Which, uh, the computer has filled in, uh, the three roads. And so now the, uh, tan or gray that was on Hardscrabble, Mendon and Clermont, Dryden.
See, Mount Harmony is still pretty gray.
But there's still a lot of holes in between them.
I'm having a hard time reading the roads, to be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
I know where they are, but.
I could send you this electronic.
Southern side of the town?
This is the initial plan right now.
Okay.
This is the initial plan. Uh, it takes a lot of effort to, to implement thirty-two nodes in a town. And then, uh, we can, you know, depending on how that goes and how well it's received, then we can look at further expanding areas. Maybe work with, uh, just public safety and, and determine where, where are the next priority areas that we should really focus on.
In, in, in my mind, one of the things that you mentioned before had to do with the tree cover. And I know that a lot of times our communication issues get more intense and then it become, the signals become worse in the summertime. And it's having tree covered. And then in the wintertime, when the leaves are off the trees, it gets, it gets better. Have you, you know, how have you factored that into this as far as being able to produce a, a reliable signal? Is, is there going to be any, any fluctuation in the reliability of your system that you're putting in here from summer to winter?
Absolutely. Uh, this has been designed, the spacing's been designed and worked in the summertime. So when the wintertime comes in, before you got five hundred feet through the trees, now maybe you're getting a seven hundred feet in coverage. And how far your phone can go away from it and still work.
So does some overlap go through there that it's not going to get worse? It's only, it's only going to get better?
Well, it depends on where you started from. Where's your reference? Right? If you, if you got your phone in the wintertime and you experienced what the, what the coverage was and you went the summertime, you know, how far off the road you went, got worse in the summertime. But if you're traveling along the road, it's going to work because the spacing is designed for the tree and the P D D.
So I guess one more question is about the telephone poles you can put in. What kind of consideration do you give to safety as far as the location of the pole that's going to be set? In relating to driveway entrances and exits, perhaps sharp curves and bends in the road where the vehicles, the vehicles are going to be able to travel off the roadway? It's going to be far enough off the road to avoid collision? Is it going to be placed in an area where somebody's not paying attention because they're talking on their cellphone? Going around the corner and there didn't used to be a pole there, but now maybe that's. Do you give any consideration to the physical placement of the pole on the roadway?
Uh, the people that, uh, the other people that, implementation people, the Tilsin people, uh, they have experts that, uh, are utility type people. I'm a radio person. Uh, so their utility experienced people are the ones that look into that. And they tell me, uh, no, you can't put a pole there. You need to go twenty feet down. I'm like, uh, okay, that's fine. Uh, so there is, there's a checks and balances between the different, uh, expertises so that the pole is located in the right place. And then it still has to go to, if it's a new one, it has to go to Verizon Telephone, who have their expertise people that are going to agree or not agree to put that pole there. So it's going to go through a couple of different layers before it's, it's not capazally put out there. It has to go through a couple of layers and an application has to go in.
So the, the pole is, if I can, the, the pole is going to be placed by Verizon Telephone. Um, and their franchise agreement with the borough, um, specifies certain considerations for where they can and can't place poles as far as how far back it has to be from the curb. Um, and it also specifies in the franchise agreement that it can't, um, obstruct, um, the view of the road and, and a couple of other safety considerations. So Verizon Wireless will in some cases ask Verizon Telephone to place a pole at a specific location that's perfect for radio frequency. And Verizon Telephone will say, no, we can't place it there for you. Um, they're the ones that have to place and own the pole. They have to maintain the pole and they have to follow the terms of their franchise agreement. So any place that Verizon Telephone wouldn't currently place a pole for their own use, they will not place for Verizon Wireless's use.
We talked about all these with the, did you get the town before you placed any poles anyway?
Exactly, and so this.
Be involved in that decision.
Then nothing precludes us also. We have.
Should be involved in that decision then.
Exactly.
Right.
We have some poles right now that are, quite frankly, they're placed on the roadway and it's reflected on. They're paved right up to the, to the roadway. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that if you're going to be adding more poles, that's, we're not creating further safety considerations. And just my last point or question is Verizon, I believe, I believe they're Verizon poles. Verizon has kind of a new policy in place as well as the power companies that when they replace a pole, they don't take the old ones now. So we have old poles that are popping up all over town because new poles are coming in and being set. And maybe they'll take all the equipment off a pole that's over here and they'll move it over there. So if you put a new pole up across the street or somewhere they want to put that equipment, is there any, anything that you, that you can do to ensure that if you come in and put a pole up maybe in the same area where, where there might be two poles right next to each other, you're going to put a third pole across the street? Where you can remove that pole that's no longer being used or have Verizon remove that pole that's no longer being used? Can you ensure that if you abandon that pole, that you'll take it out?
So we will look at those situations, absolutely.
There's a lot of broken poles in town that.
Yes. That was one of the things I'm picking up because there are holes all over town that have been here for a long time, left before Sandy from other events. Um, there's wires that are sprung from some of Verizon's, some is not. Every time I end up, you know, moving leads or fighting something, I find another piece of fiber rock and cable that's been broken and just sometimes tangy and sometimes it's just on the ground. There's a lot of junk around, especially poles, which if I remember correctly are probably treated with, uh, all kinds of things that are supposed to be in, uh, specially disposed of. So, I mean, uh, and I talked to our utility people, our public works people, and they said, we have to call utility, good luck. That's really not what I think anybody wants here.
So this is an opportunity for us to look, take a look at that.
Looks like that.
Okay. Um, also, none of this preclude, our municipal consents that we're coming here to ask for the town's approval for doesn't preclude us having to submit drawings to your building department?
Yeah.
Um, we have to get whatever permits are normally, even though we're getting, we're using the right of way, we're not going through the same process we would if we weren't using the right of way. We still have to provide you with construction drawings and fill out your permit applications and do all the things that would otherwise need to be done. So that's, you, you know about these poles and the location.
I just want to make sure there's a little, uh, pro quo on the cleanup from it's past.
Understood.
I have a question. Rather than paving all these residential areas, would it be at all possible to have any larger poles in more obscure places that, um, you know, like you see in a highway, an earthquake pole?
That's what we tried. I can't say this one, but you can see, that's what we tried six years ago. And when it came in front of the, uh, zoning boards for this red dot, which was going to be on the rear fifty pole that was going to cover Hardscrabble and Mendon Road and fix the gaps on that. Uh, but the, that didn't work out. So, good time.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone else have any questions? Our worst. Yes, ma'am.
What town nearby?
Just kind of identify, just come up and identify yourself.
Or Brasilia. Um, what town has this?
Ma'am, you have to come up to the microphone because our audios are working.
What town nearby has, um, what you're proposing? What can we visually see on the poles in a, in a town nearby?
Warren.
Warren.
There's a couple up in Warren.
Oh, yeah, Warren's up.
North of seventy-eight. Uh, Doc Watch Hollow Road.
Mm-hmm. It's right off of Mount Harbor.
Yeah, it's about two parts.
What's the population of Warren versus Bernersville?
That section of Warren is pretty similar. Uh, it's, it's light suburban rural type an area and it's very hilly, uh, north of seventy-eight. So it's, and then it has a couple little, uh, um, residential developments and then there's rural and going back up. So it's quite similar in that section of Warren to the sections that we're looking at here.
What's the population of Bernersville?
Seventy-eight hundred.
Wait, let's see here, something.
And again, in this presentation that you gave us that addresses the population and terrain. Thank you. All right, everybody's.
All right, so the resolution that would address the first level consent is in the original package.
Okay.
And we did not, you do not have a copy of the second level, but we can leave that with you.
Very good. Yes, if you can, leave it to our borough clerk and then we'll, um, distribute and discuss it further with our legal team.
We can leave that with Sandra.
Yep, we can. And we can provide them, uh, in electronic format and word format if you need some changes.
Yeah, because it's like rough reading in a small print. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to fill in the gaps?
I just have the question.
Yes.
Who, who should be the point of contact as far as Sandra?
Contact Sandra, yes. And she'll distribute the information to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Let me let that break down first, yeah. Acting like you're sick again.
Two, three weeks?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself when this comes to vote since I'm doing a Verizon Network project for Verizon. Okay.
And of course I will.
All right, ready, sir?
So you have the opportunity.
You have an opportunity to vote, Ron.
There we go.
All right, moving on to items of business ordinance. Um, mayor to open a public hearing on sixteen, seventeen twenty-six, supplementing and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled Administration to allow Borough Council members to attend regular meetings by telephone if meeting would otherwise have to be canceled due to lack of a form. Want to open a public hearing on this? Anyone with a public question to be heard? Council members? Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion to pass on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mr. Bearbrown. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt is away from the podium. Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, mayor to open a public.
On one. Yes.
Yes. Open a public hearing on sixteen, seventeen twenty-seven concerning sewer connection fees and sewer user rates and allocation and amending chapter sixteen of the Borough Code entitled Sewer Regulations. Anybody with a public question to be heard? Council members? Seeing that I'll entertain a motion to pass on final reading and adopt as published. Move by Mr. Bearbrown.
Sir.
Second by Mr. DeLeo, roll call, please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade? Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, um, mayor to open a public hearing on sixteen, seventeen twenty-eight, an ordinance concerning parking regulations on Alcott Avenue and amending chapter eight of the Borough Code entitled Traffic.
Wasn't that supposed to be thirty-five feet?
That's the motion we don't need.
Okay. Okay.
Twenty-five to thirty-five.
I'll move it. Thirty-five.
All right, motion that, um, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-eight be amended by increasing the new and no parking zone from twenty-five feet and that ordinance as amended be published according to law. That a public hearing on the ordinance as amended be scheduled for meeting beginning at seven PM on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. It was moved by Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bearbrown?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to move that ordinance sixteen, seventeen, twenty-nine, ordinance setting two thousand and seventeen salaries and hourly rates for non-contractual employees be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. No motion?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Youngblood, second by Councilwoman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to move that ordinance sixteen, seventeen, thirty, concerning parking regulations in the Library Park and Lot and amending chapter eight of the Borough Code entitled Parking Lots and All Street Traffic Regulations be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM on November twenty-eighth. No motion?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mr. DeLeo. Roll call, please. I know our call, but, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, we have resolutions sixteen, one sixty-six to sixteen, two oh nine. Anyone want to pull any for discussion or have any comments?
Um, well, just pull one sixty-six.
Okay.
And, uh, two, three, seven, eight.
All right, Peter, what's your, I'll let you.
Seven?
Eight.
Chan, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, um, Peter, your question?
Uh, Jack, there's a, uh, issue with the refunding of the, uh, Esco?
Uh, no, I think there's already some.
Yeah, we will, though.
Yes.
All right, what's your next one, Peter?
Did we resolve the contract issues with the, uh, trouble?
I drafted a new extension rather than proposing a contract.
And I guess that's it.
Two oh seven?
No, it's not.
Two oh seven, okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? I see none. I entertain a motion to move on resolution sixteen one sixty-six to sixteen two oh nine.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Youngblood, roll call please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, we have six C, Planning Board Recommendations to amend the Portable Housing LDR Article Thirteen. Questions or comments?
My only comment is, I mean, we clearly need to do something, but twenty percent seems a fairly large percentage to require. Is that the norm now?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Will we get this ready for introduction at the next meeting?
Yes, I think so. There's no questions, it's well written and thought, so we'll introduce it at the next meeting. All right, and Paula, Friends for Green in Burnsville?
How you doing? Do you need a few more? They take the. Home Stewart seventy-six, Mount Harvard Road. I'm here representing someone on the board of Friends for Green in Burnsville. This is an unprofessional rendering of the idea of what we want to try and do. And. The idea is that, and there has been a lot of discussion before you recently about the fact we don't have much of our history left in Burnsville. And so the Friends for Green in Burnsville thought that we would apply, which we have, to something called the New Jersey Committee of the Garden Club, which is, it goes across all the garden clubs of the, under the auspices of the Garden Club of America in New Jersey. And part of what they do with the money that is raised is to grant monies for civic improvement and horticulture education. So the grant that we've applied for, which you've received a copy of, is partially to put signage in, you know, as I know you're all familiar with this area, but this is a, it's just a color picture of the area around the train station where there have been planted stuff and to have the common names and the Latin names to try to educate people about horticulture. And in addition, in this area where, which is right near where the Fenwick statue is, is to have an interpretive sign and which would be this sort of idea on two wooden posts. And on the sign would be these pictures with some copy that talks about the original train station and how it's the Burnsville News Office and some of these photographs. Some of them came from Dave Neal and others came from the history room at the library that they gave us. So we just, you know, it would be thirty-six by twenty-four, we're not talking about huge thing. It would be permanent to the extent that hopefully some, so that's what we're here to just ask.
And wouldn't be lighted or anything, right?
No, no, it would look, it would look like this, that, you know, just.
Yeah.
It would be coded. The company was recommended to us from the New York Botanical Garden and they are, you know, they've been in the business for eighteen years making signage for zoos and botanical gardens around the country.
So we would have.
Called Larkley.
We would have the one larger sign and also smaller ones identifying different species of plants?
The smaller ones are literally about that big that would just be stuck in the ground, you know, next to some of the plants to identify.
Like we're at the Arboretum, you see them at the.
Right, and it would have the Latin name and the, so we've applied for this grant, but as part of the application process, we were required to come and ask if we received the grant, if we had your permission to put the signage.
Pretty desolate to be like this.
Yeah. Put a lot more trees in, that's for sure.
Well, as you.
You guys have been doing a good job for a hundred years.
There were no, there were no plaque comments back then, so.
Yeah, right. The horses have trove.
Yeah, a few horses, yeah.
There's a sewer conservation officer.
There's one, there's one here that you can't really see, but there's a, but the one in the upper, to your right, is actually a picture of a dog in the middle of the parking lot. And I can't remember whether that came from Dave Neal or it came from the ladies at the library.
It's his dog.
No, this is a pretty old one, I don't think that was his dog.
It was a joke.
Maybe his great-grandfather's dog, but.
Well, the only thing is, can you just show us where you're going to put that placard on the property?
Yeah, it's in, this is why I brought this picture. Yes, it's, this is the picture that I took on a brighter day. And it's, let's see, I'm trying to think. Millisum is, Millisum is right.
Within the planning bed, basically, though.
Yes, exactly, exactly, no, we're not, we're not going to disturb any bricks or ask anybody to dig anything, you know.
Because it's really a tight area.
It's, but it's small. We're talking about something that's thirty-six by twenty-four, so you can take that.
No, I haven't hear it, don't worry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, there's also a separate thing under the color.
Yeah, I tried to send the different things.
Some stuff comes through black and white.
I know, I know, I know.
Go through the exercises we're doing here.
And my computer was broken, I just got it back.
Oh, that's no fun.
So I'm looking at it.
Right.
Twice now, display show, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just in that, in that area where there's a little bed there and just so people can say, oh gee, this has been here a while.
Yes, very good. Are you all in favor, council members?
General idea.
Everybody good?
Okay.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. May I get your support?
No, I'd like to friends for us all, so they're great.
Thanks for putting some trees in there.
If you wanted to look at this, what was in the picture? Actually, Ann Peterson, the president and the prince of, daughter-in-law, she's a landscape architect and she donated her services to this. So would you like us to reach out to New Jersey Transit? I don't know, whatever your recommendation is.
Yeah, we're going to be pretty far away if we have a statue there already, so. Jack, you want to reach out to them?
Sure. Sure, but, right.
It's actually borough business, yeah.
Okay. All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, six C, Burners Lion Club requests regarding holiday decorations, annual.
It's the breeze, the breeze and the crash, plus all the extra.
Yeah, the pioneer.
Frosty and all that, whatever. More the better.
Not, not specific, the original.
It's the same every year.
Yes.
Same every year.
Yes.
This year, when the request came in, my only comment to them was that council may want to consider a date by which that should be removed, because last winter it was out there for a very long time.
February second.
No, March.
Well, somebody said something about January twenty-first or something, some.
It seems a little early. Could be snowing still. I think February second's fine.
February second?
Okay, February second.
I mean, the tree in general.
Oh, the tree, yeah. All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstained? All right, the ayes have it. Six F, Parking Decal Resolution.
I just want to know if you're proposing any changes in fees or anything?
No, fees, no.
Not with the run with this one?
No, so we just.
We changed it last year.
We just updated that last year, yeah.
Yeah.
So no changes, we're all fine?
Yeah.
All right.
There's, I noticed when the apartment market this weekend, there was someone in Pennsylvania that was over the parking lot and was, appeared to be trying to figure out where the numbers were and then moved the car and the mansion just left. I know you're holding off on a lot of things. Are we going to paint numbers again or change the numbering system?
I think it's time to do some work.
Yeah, once we, once we repaved that.
And we found a new machine for collecting tech tools yet?
Yes, Ralph. Ralph would like to weigh in.
We're having a two-on-three strike, we're meeting with the striking people, we're moving up Thursday this week, so by next week our budget should be strike and I guess we'll work with the chief to see if we can get numbers and something to strike.
And I know the chief has certainly correctly mentioned that there's an issue, especially if there's weeds or something holds now, it's very hard for your officers to do any enforcement because they don't know where the numbers are and so they don't, because I know some towns have actually put up a little post, usually in a line between two spaces and one of those are left.
Well, I had never heard about that, the first thing we want to address is the strike and even though it's a number of parts of the parking lot are not in good shape.
Yeah.
I'm not going to go out and do that anyway, so we can help the police with their enforcement.
So we've, we've regarded that. There is, it's not really, we can determine where the numbers are for parking here, we can determine where the numbers are, we can pick them up and leave them. So we have the schematic that all the stalls in the, in the train station, all the parking spaces are already numbered, so it's merely a matter of pulling out the map and then having somebody go and expense line the numbers in the, in the particular spot after the spots are striped. So, you know, that will help dramatically. But we've been talking a long time and I've, you know, I've been waiting for and asking for some guidance and I don't think anyone's really determined what to do about the parking meter in the center of town. Does it make sense to replace it? Do we want to go to some other type of system? Do we want to reallocate the parking that's present in the, in the train station? You know, it doesn't, we can number the spaces, the numbers can be easily removed if they need to be, but long-term, and we talked about that meter, that parking meter is done, it's tasked, it's usable lifespan. We have a service contract on it. Frequent is, does not function properly, it's constantly being taken out of service.
And that's why we talked about it before we went here, chief.
We need to renew that. And I think, you know, public state, I think that's on our agenda of things to get to. I have some, some information about it, the meter that would replace it. I don't know if anybody's going to the League of Municipalities Conference, is that coming up?
Yes, this week.
I can get you information on the vendor, if anybody's going to go down there.
Okay.
You can see the recommended replacement that our current vendor is using and I'd be, you know, I'd be delighted if you would stop around a little bit and maybe look at some other parking solutions that might need our use there.
Aren't we going to be paving that lots, why are we striping now?
Pay it next spring. Ralph, what's the estimated cost of striping that lot?
Why are we striping?
At this point in time.
Do temporary permits just.
I don't have an estimate. I said it was John Dow and.
Because right now it's.
Because maybe.
You're all talking like a friend.
Is it, yeah, I was going to say, are, are we planning to pave it in the spring?
Take them four hours.
Spring is ambitious, we are planning to pave during the summer months.
But next, nonetheless, it's next year, that was the plan with, you know, from our discussion, so.
The plan, there are a lot of people that park in there at night, especially with all the restaurants and things, and I think if you do a preview of it, we're going to have a parking problem. We have to give some guidance.
When was the last time it was striped?
Five years.
No, that's what I'm saying.
So all I'm saying is only six months, I mean, what's the, you know, we're going to stripe it, pave over it and stripe it again?
That ticketing has been suspended because there's a lack of enforcement and we're trying to address that.
There's not, there's not a lack of enforcement, we can't. You can't enforce it, you really can't. The other thing to just keep in mind, I don't know if anybody's been down there, and Mr. Burnham, I think you go down on Saturday to the farmer's market, people are parking literally all over the place. We have the other side of the train station parking lot that are transit spots that we're obligated to transit on the parking unit that we have with them. And we, it looks like the park controller told us to hit the port and just stop wherever they want to be. It's the lines weave in and out, we couldn't get an ambulance or a fire truck through some of the lanes on some occasions, people don't know where to park. And especially in the center, the center island on the side of the train station closest to the center of town, if you don't want to do the whole thing, you don't have a real problem like that on the side of the train station nearest us, this side of the train station, the south side, but on the north side, that parking lot is becoming extremely congested and nobody knows where to park because you can't even see the lines.
People are very frustrated and they're very upset that it looks like that.
So if you could, if you could just put some lines in the middle of that part, so when people park there, you can keep travel orders open through the parking lot, people pull in there with trucks, oversized, you know, some oversized vehicles, some bigger vehicles, smaller vehicles, it's kind of a, it's a mismatch of parking. You know, enforcement is only one side of the issue, but having people have some idea of where they need to be in it before they wouldn't know. That's, that's the only other issue for your consideration, if you want to wait, we can wait. And that's, that's not really.
We'd do a temporary permanent stripe.
Why don't we find out the cost of just doing it the north path?
Just do a couple things. Well, get, get all the numbers. It's only going to take them four hours with the crew to do that whole entire lot. And you know what? You don't want a perfect glass beaded job and everything else, lace the lines out, get it done. That means a thousand, two thousand dollars. It'll help, it'll help the police, it'll help the people park in there, and you know what? We might not get in there till early summer just to get it milled and paved anyway.
I think if it was.
Six months.
If it was brought up as a temporary thing like that, I think I wouldn't have even had any issue to talk about. Should probably bring those things to light first, if it was just going to be a simple thing.
A temporary permanent job, just get ourselves.
If that's how it was presented, I think that would have been a little easier to understand.
Hey Ralph, what's in that current budget for the train station?
The total dollars in there, it's, I think it's somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand.
I am, yeah, it's.
Can I just say too, with relation to the strike from some of your work, I don't know if you're going to be able to squeeze this in here tonight or not, but I think you will. John McCall and I today, we're up at the intersection of Mill Street and Anderson Road. We're looking at doing some, some lane markings in the intersection there because we're, we're experiencing a much more serious problem in the past with vehicles passing, coming down Anderson Hill Road over the double yellow line, going against the upcoming flow of traffic, passing through the intersection to make the left turn at the center of town with traffic stacks for vehicles to go straight through Mount Area to make a right onto two oh two south. The, the left turn lane is oftentimes clear and as people come over the hill to come down Anderson Road, they see that clear left turn lane or they just hit the left lane and they come down the hill at accelerating speeds through the intersection and they try to get to that traffic light to make that left turn. As there's vehicles trying to pull out of Mill Street to make a left, it's all over, cancel people there, they're trying to do exactly that, it's very, very difficult and it's very dangerous. We were hoping that on the day that the striking is done for the train station, that while the strikers are in town, we can create a box inside the one lane of Mill Street, simple square box for the next in the middle to delineate where that intersection is that's supposed to be clear. Right now, there's a sign that says do not block the intersection, it's not working. It's a solidly blocked and stacked through that intersection constantly. Backs up traffic on Mill Street, people coming out of Mill Street pull out into the box and block the lane because they want to make a right turn, so then they block any access that there might be to the left turn lane. We were hoping to be able to strike that at the same time with some type of a, some type of a traffic box so if you might see it and. They're going to be here, doesn't seem unreasonable. Have to find it. To make a.
That's what I'm saying, no, no.
So I just wanted to, somehow we wanted to let you know that we were hoping to be able to facilitate that when, when the strikers came and anybody who looked up one day and come in and say, where'd this come from? Or what's this all about? But we need to do something to keep that intersection clear. So that with a little bit of new signs that we were looking at and we're hoping to be able to alleviate some of those problems and some.
Do we need a new ordinance for that for enforcement purposes?
I don't believe we need an ordinance, there's already statutes in place. Just keep the intersection, just, just science telling people what they could already know, but.
The people who are going over the W L line to make that, you know, rush to get to the left turn lane, have we tried putting anybody in patrol car up there?
We have, we have traffic posts here all the time and typically we park police cars here, so the town will know, they see the police car coming and going. It's a two to three person operation to get out there and do it, but we were sitting out there today with violation after violation after violation. I personally have been out there many mornings with my own vehicle, a mar car, to observe traffic and even when I'm there in my mar car, it seems like they're, they're looking and they're seeing if they can do it. If there's any sign of any police cars there, obviously they're, they're not going to do it. If there's any sign of any police cars there, obviously they're, they're not going to do it, but when they're not paying attention there, or when there's no police cars there, that's when we see it. So we would have put two or three people there, and it would include somebody in the car who's standing in the doorway, not in the uniform, just observing and calling out the violations as people, as people would go through, it's, that's, that's a significant number of people that I don't always have to, to spend a period of time, but if, after we get this painted out, and the appropriate markings are there, then I think that would be worthwhile for silver.
Thanks, chief.
So we do spend a lot of time there on that.
So I guess we're gonna do the box? Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Good?
Anywhere else we need the box?
Well, that's a, that's one now.
It's a slipper around the box?
All right.
In that same neighborhood, have you talked to Jack about, uh, decreasing the speed limit on Anderson Hill just beyond that point of your?
Yeah, that, we, we have had some correspondence back and forth, and, uh, Jack, I think we can do that, right?
Yes.
So it appears to be, what, what, uh, we're talking about, where this is brought to the Public Safety Committee the other night, was in, in response to some of the concerns about speeding on Anderson Hill Road. What a lot of people don't realize is the thirty-five mile an hour zone begins at Seamy Drive at the bottom of the hill. So cars that are going up Anderson Hill, and cars that are going down Anderson Hill are traveling at thirty-five miles an hour. The minute they hit Seamy Drive, it's twenty-five miles an hour. It's hard to get them to decelerate going down the hill and slow down to the appropriate speed. It would make a lot more sense, given the hill, the curve, the intersecting streets on a blind curve as you go up Anderson Road, to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour between Sycamore and Seamy Drive. We've addressed this in the past, we've talked about it, however, we were not, we didn't always have the latitude to do that without state approval, but a couple of years ago, the law has since, has since, um, been revised. It gives us more control of regulating speed on street, on local streets. And, and that particular case, I think that, you know, typical speed limit reduction would be more, where you might think it would be the state, which is standard thirty-five is what the state would call for, but by ordinance, we can establish a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit because of the extenuating circumstances that we're looking at, and I think the Public Safety Committee was in agreement that that would probably be approved, they could do, if you see the speed limit reduction up to twenty-five miles an hour, getting it, um, Sycamore Hill Road possible. I think Roland Hill, uh, Roland Hill and Anderson intersection is at the top of the hill, uh, before, that's, before the crosswalk with the flashing lights. Well, there's, there's, there's two, right?
Right before.
There's, there's one on.
Right before.
There's one on. There's Roland Hill and Sycamore, and then there's. Windwood, and there's one in Windwood.
Right.
The, the, the flashing light is on. It's between Windwood and Roland Hill.
Yeah.
I think it started in Sycamore, you know, cause they're gonna come up over that hill. Good idea. So I think we, we could do that.
Everybody good?
We agree with that?
We agree?
Agreed.
All right, Jack, are you per?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Kevin, do we know if they increased the wattage on Anderson Hill Road? I think we talked about. We did it the one time, and it seemed to be an improvement. So it's done, they increased. Yeah, it was done, yeah, that was done a month, you know, more time ago. Yeah, it was like two months ago, I guess. All right.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, Gus Correspondence, six G, um, Sustainable Jersey, they sent me a notice that Burnsville has achieved Sustainable Jersey Bronze, um, recertification last year since December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and that Burnsville will be honored at the League of Municipalities Conference, um, tomorrow, actually. Big shout out to Ed English, did a great job on the grants, and they asked Ed to speak on behalf of his grant writing and our, um, uh, and the grants that we have received, so Ed will be speaking down there. I'll pick Ed up tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, and we're gonna drive down to Atlantic City. So there we go.
A date.
And that's it. All right.
You're not gonna go, is pre-issued by anyone that, that, you know?
I'm taking a Honda C R V, taking the S U V out, guested up today already for leaving early. All right, um.
Anyway, but I think, uh, congratulations goes to Ed.
Yeah, Ed, Ed, did a great job, great job, was the greatest, great job.
That does a lot of good work.
That is comedy. Yes, mm-hmm, and consistent every year, we get it. So, um, okay, before we go into close session, any council members have anything else?
Uh, we also, on the honor of the Sustainable Jersey, we ought to be thanking Bob Baker.
Yes.
He really wrote that, the whole presentation.
I'm sorry, can you still?
Bob Baker, I said it was him, and he spent hours.
Also our consultant on getting the plan done, really fast. Cause normally we pay more.
Those things are about four, six, five, I just see them. Okay, anyone else?
Ralph, I think those two bubblers in that lawn look terrific. And the geese, I mean, you have hundreds there, so we go, and bubblers here.
Is it really going to help?
Well done.
They're, they're gonna get used to it, though, the geese will come back. Good job, though, Ralph, it looks beautiful.
We're circulating the water.
Yes.
Ready to make a motion?
All right, anybody else?
No. Good.
Can our councilman come to a close session?
He's gotta sign a sheet.
Sign a sheet first.
Uh, just if we need any decision related to the session.
No.
Okay. All right, very good, same, I can't leave early.